Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to our regularly scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting for Haveford Township. It is Monday, September 9th. Mr. Berman, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondak.
Present.
Commissioner Forstie Grubb.
Here.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Here.
Commissioner Caveter.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner McCollum.
Here.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Here.
Commissioner Holmes.
Here.
Chief?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the first place.
God bless America. Good evening. Nice to see everybody here today, first, after the first week of school. Our first item on tonight's agenda is letters of commendation. I believe Commissioners Quinn and Gondak will be coming forward, and Manager Berman.
Every week that goes by, myself and my fellow commissioners are amazed and truly feel blessed by the level of dedication, the level of training, and basically the level of excellence that our emergent, our first responders provide us as residents of this township. There's constantly incidences occurring around here that require the joint response of our fire, our EMT, and our police, often with those people putting their own lives in harm's way for our safety. One such incident occurred on May 11th, 2024, and the Board of Commissioners would like to recognize it.
All people come up with their names.
Their names come up, come up this way, and we'll go over that way.
A little piece of housekeeping. When your name, when your name is called, if you could come up this way, receive your letter of commendation and exit that way, please.
We're gonna, we're gonna have them stand over there.
And stand, if you'd stand over by Commissioner Quinn for photos. The Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haveford wishes to express our deepest gratitude and commendation for the exemplary actions of the selfless volunteers and dedicated personnel who responded to the emergency incident on May 11th, 2024, at 13:24 PM at the intersection of Westchester Pike and Glengarry Road. The situation, initially reported as an accident with entrapment, was quickly assessed by Assistant Chief Thomas Straub of Oakmont Fire Company. Deputy Chief Lou Letanzio and his team from Minowa Fire Company took decisive action to manage the scene, control hazards, and provide critical medical care. Notably, Officer Colin Patrick from the Haveford Township Police Department identified a patient in need of immediate assistance as he had seized and lost vital signs. This prompted a coordinated effort to provide CPR and the use of an AED, which was instrumental in saving the patient's life. The patient's vitals were restored and his care, along with that of the other injured parties, was transferred to arriving paramedics from Norberth Ambulance and Mercy Fitzgerald Hospital, along with units from other surrounding communities. The quick and coordinated response by these teams showcases the strength and preparedness of our emergency services. Their courage and professionalism in the face of a challenging situation are a testament to their commitment to our community's safety. We would like to recognize and commend the following individuals for their outstanding service and dedication and heroic actions, excuse me, for their outstanding service and your dedication and heroic actions have made a significant impact on our community. We are proud to have such exemplary individuals serving Haveford Township. From the Haveford Township Police Department, Sergeant James Reynolds. And Officer Michael Brennan. From the Minowa Fire Company, EMT Deputy Chief Louis Letanzio. From the Oakmont Fire Company, Assistant Chief Thomas Straub. Paramedic Alex Minzer. And from Mercy Fitzgerald EMS, Paramedic TJ Sterling. On behalf of myself and my fellow commissioners, I'd like to thank you all.
Christina, do we want to get any pictures while everybody's up here? Out in the hallway, okay. All right, let's take a break while everybody moves outside for photographs.
Keep going.
Oh.
They have some ones.
Hello.
Hey, not nice.
All right, folks, we're gonna pause this meeting for five or so minutes just to get some more chairs in the back. Folks, the next item on our agenda, this weekend, folks, don't make me use this cabbie, okay? I, I, I do think this mic is quieter than usual, so everyone's gonna have to be super quiet. Our next item is a proclamation honoring the Haveford Hawks Ice Hockey Club. They will be celebrating their 50th anniversary this weekend at the stadium on the, on the 14th, on the ice. But we do want to read a proclamation tonight that we will also be reading and presenting to them on Saturday night. So, if I may, "Whereas the Haveford Hawks Ice Hockey Club has been a cornerstone of youth sports in Delaware and Montgomery Counties for the past 50 years, promoting and organizing the sport of ice hockey for generations of young athletes. And whereas the Haveford Hawks have provided opportunities for children ages six to 18 to not only learn and excel in hockey, but also to develop crucial life skills such as respect for peers, coaches, officials, and the broader community. And whereas, through their dedication to sportsmanship, physical and emotional health, and the values of teamwork, the Haveford Hawks have positively impacted the lives of countless players who've gone on to become both skilled athletes and upstanding members of our community. And whereas, in 2024, the Haveford Hawks Ice Hockey Club will commemorate 50 years of excellence, and through a celebratory ceremony at the stadium this Saturday, September 14th, 2024, will pay tribute to those who have contributed to the club's success. And whereas, the Haveford Township Board of Commissioners wishes to recognize the invaluable contributions of the Haveford Hawks Ice Hockey Club, not only to the sport of ice hockey, but to the fabric of our community over the past 50 years. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Haveford Township Board of Commissioners does hereby honor and commend the Haveford Hawks Ice Hockey Club on their 50th anniversary, acknowledging their profound impact on the youth of our community, and celebrating their legacy of excellence in sportsmanship and community spirit. And be it further proclaimed that the Haveford Township Board of Commissioners wishes to express our gratitude to the Haveford Hawks Ice Hockey Club for their commitment to Haveford Township and allowing our stadium to be its home for so many years. Proclaim this ninth day of September, 2024." Finally, my colleague, Commissioner Quinn, would like to commemorate the Grange Estate.
Okay, so I thought since I started, I'll go through all 50 years, and we'll be here for 50 more years, so. But I wanted to start, start, or to start, start off by thanking the Grange for all that they've done for our community. And when I first got involved before, well, I was involved for four years, but when I first got, got involved, Jim McGarry appointed me to the Grange Board, so that was honored. And now I serve as the Chair, Chair of the Grange, which I'm honored to do. So I will read, read this and get through it as fast as I can. But "Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Ha- Ha- or Haveford, Count, Count, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, takes great pleasure in recognizing one of the many Hav- or Haveford Township historical properties which offers beauty and serenity. And whereas the Commissioners and residents of Ha- Ha- or Haveford Township wish to acknowledge and sell, sell, and sell, celebrate Hav- or Haveford Town Township's Grange, Grange Estate on 50 years. Where, where is the Grange has served as a vital hub for educating the community on the historical or significance of the property, engaging the community in its holiday festivities, providing a peaceful haven within the gardens and grounds, and enhancing the quality of life for residents and of all ages. And whereas, where, where, whereas Henry Lewis purchased the land in 1682 and arrived late, later that year in Haveford Township, Hen- or Henry Lewis's son began to build the current mansion in about 1700 after his dad's death. And where, where, where is the Grange was sold to Haveford Township in May of 1974. And where is the Grange is also known as Main Koch? Was I close? And Clifton Hall. And now therefore proclaim that the Board of Comit- or Commissioners of the Township of Hav- Hav- Haveford extends to all members continued best w- wishes and offer a special thank, thank you for your service and dedication to this day. McDeferson Ha- Ha- or Haveford Township Gem proclaim this ninth day of September, the Township of Hav- Hav- Haveford Board of Commissioners. If you guys would like to come up and...
My barns, remember?
We don't take direction arrows, well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, great. The next, the next item on our agenda, everybody is familiar with, is our Citizens Forum. As a reminder to folks, how the Citizens Forum works, people call in and can register to speak. Those folks are invited to come up at the start of the Citizens Forum. They have three minutes to speak. They can speak on any topic at all. After that, we have the open forum, but that is limited to items on our agenda this evening. You may recall later in the meeting, after we've gone through the rest of the business of the meeting, we reopen the floor to anyone who would like to speak on any topic. Now, a little bird has told me that a lot of people are here tonight to discuss pickleball at various sites in the township, but I think principally Paddock Park. I know that several of our registered speakers have identified pickleball courts as the subject of their conversation. But for the scores of you that are here that are not on our registered list, it would be our, it is our procedure that you would speak at the end of the meeting when the, when we come back to the Citizens Forum for people on non-agenda items. But let me ask this question. A show of hands, are there folks here tonight who aren't speaking about pickleball? Could you show me your hands? Is there anyone? Okay. Now, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do something I'm probably gonna regret for a very long time, but this is what I'm going to ask. I have, I have, I have four registered speakers, Mr. Kelly, Mr. DiMarco, Mr. Og, and Ms. Micklin. I see your hands? Okay. There are seats up, so if the two of you would come up forward, sit up here, what I want to ask. The rest of the room, has it just by accident fallen into one side of the room is speaking, you know, favorably, and another side of the room is, has some criticisms for it? Are we kind of evenly sprinkled? I cannot, you know, we keep township personnel here. Folks have things that we do, contracts and everything. I really don't think I can invite everyone to speak at this part of the meeting, as opposed to later in the meeting when we get to the points about, after we've done the rest of the official business and we open the floor again to, to, to citizens' input on issues that are not on the agenda. And just so we're very clear, there is nothing about pickleball or the use of any of our courts tonight on our agenda. And so I can be very clear about another thing, to the extent that this has gone out. There is nothing on our, in our foreseeable future on any of our agendas about banning pickleball in any of our courts. So to the extent that any was here, under the concern that that is one of the things being considered by our board, it is not being considered tonight, and it's really not being considered for the future. We did hear a month ago about issues involving pickleball and the noise and the time it is played and the amount that it is played, and the township is considering that, but there just isn't any official action right now scheduled. And that's why it's not on the agenda, and that's why I'm going through this exercise. But I, but I would be willing, in the Citizens Forum, to hear from a couple people, since we dedicated several minutes to this anyway, if you were speaking on agenda items. So I, after the registered speakers come, I'm going to ask for a show of hands, and I'm gonna try to pick two folks who want to say something positive about pickleball, and two folks who want to say something maybe less positive about pickleball. And then I am going to have to push everyone off until later in, in the, in the meeting. I, I, I trust that that will anger everybody in the crowd, and then in that case, I have done my job. Ma'am, yes? Oh, great, yes. Well, that must feel great for you, you know? I mean, really. Yeah, yeah. Someday, I'm looking forward to being in a room full of people that are supporting me. Yeah, but, yeah, yeah. So I have a feeling I'm gonna be surrounded either by a choir of angels or people with pitchforks when that actually happens. But that is great. Eileen, I think everyone is looking forward to hearing what you have to say and how enthusiastically the crowd accepts it. So I would remind that your entourage should stay respectful while you're speaking. It would matter to us they didn't all whoop it up, or perhaps yell over any folks who say anything contrary to what you say. And that goes, that goes for everybody, and I don't mean just to pick on Ms. Micklin here. So I appreciate you telling me that. You're suggesting that there's a core of folks here who, who, who don't necessarily want to speak. And again, I will stick to my picking a couple people out of the crowd on this topic who aren't registered to speak, but otherwise, I am going to postpone the rest of the comments till later in the meeting. So that said, and God bless you for following this, Mr. Kelly, the floor is yours for three minutes.
I'm sharing my email from neighbors that they received from Commissioner Trombetta two weeks after the last meeting, as my neighbors left that meeting with a sense of hope regarding the three-plus-year noise ordinance violating pickleball courts. The unresolved issue is that the township is in violation of its own noise ordinance every day the paddock courts are open. Judy, thank you for your email. Dear neighbors, my apologies for the delayed response. I am sympathetic to the impact that the pickleball court play has had on your lives, and hope that we can continue to have positive dialogue. I do hope you'll recognize that significant efforts have been made by the township, and I feel compelled to remind all on this thread of the actions we've taken to date to demonstrate our commitment to supporting our neighbors of Paddock Park. And one of our neighbors said to me, "That's like a person that causes the accident and then goes to the victim and says, 'I'm the one that called the tow truck. My insurance is paying for your damage.'" So I said, "Well, you don't come to the meeting." Installation of sound mitigation curtains.
Thank you on behalf of all of us for that.
Sound studies, alternative pickleball locations, adjustment of court hours, installation of timed locks, court closures, increased programming, regular monitoring of the courts, additional signage, indoor pickleball alternatives, community use of courts, each ineffective. The unresolved issue is that the township is in violation of its own noise ordinance every day these courts are open. The curtains, they're first installed on the court's floor to ceiling horizontally, only halfway around the court, taken down and rehung vertically inside the courts, leaving gaps above and below the curtains only halfway around the courts, taken down and rehung vertically outside the courts, all around the courts. Sound studies, too. First studies were done without the curtains. The sound test data showed that they were over, the sound noise was over the 57-decibel limit. The second study, upon the third hanging of the curtains, completely covering the courts, sound test data over the 57-decibel limit. Following the second sound study, half the curtains were removed. The unresolved issue is that the township is in violation of its own noise ordinance every day these courts are open. Alternative pickleball locations, never at full capacity, remote locales unfamiliar to the majority of the players outside of the township that can't find them. Adjustment of court hours, there were no hours. He gave it a start time. Installation of timed locks, they were easily opened by paddles and people were in there whenever they wanted, so that was a waste of money. So now locks and chains, and we even have fence climbers that climb into the courts. Court closures, the courts were closed during the first week of playground camp. If there were no playground camp, those courts wouldn't have been closed for the week, so that doesn't even belong on this list of favors. The unresolved issue, the township is in violation of its own noise ordinance every day these courts are open. Indoor pickleball alternatives, October 7th, five to six bucks a player. Increased programming, we've also introduced additional programming such as clinics at Paddock Park, the location that violates the township ordinance every day it's open, and collecting money. Pickleball clinics costing $120 per person, again, on courts that violate- Pickleball clinics costing $120 per person, again, on courts that violate township noise ordinances every day they're open. Pickleball tournaments costing $35 per player, eight courts, 32 players. The township is collecting money on courts that are violating its own sound ordinance every day they're open. Chief Iola.
Mr. Kelly, I'm gonna ask you to wrap up.
Okay.
I've gone past your three minutes.
If your officers are called to a residence due to noise, maybe a party, the party gets shut down, homeowner fined, no excuses, we'll close the curtains. People are really enjoying this. If these courts are functioning daily, violating sound ordinances, no closure, no citation, what's the difference? Judy's closing comments, and just let me get this in here, was, "I do not support imposing further restrictions beyond the current every other Sunday closure. I will not support the closing of the courts entirely. They are a well-loved amenity, and removing them would likely result in an outcry from the many community members who cherish them." To that outcry, "The township is in violation of its own ordinance every day these courts are open. You have alternative courts to play on in addition to indoor play at the crack because the township is in violation of its own noise ordinance every day these courts are open." Paddock Courts are now closed, you're collecting money.
Mr. Kelly, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have to interrupt you now. Thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate it. Our next speaker is James DiMarco.
Yeah, my name is Jim DiMarco. I live on Colfax Road. I was here last month talking about the pickleball noise issue. In last meeting, we came away with kind of a false hope. We thought that we were finally actually heard. We were hoping that a solution to ease our pain with the pickleball noise could be reached. While we appreciate the no pickleball on the tennis court sign that went up, we are not addressing the real issue. It's the pickleball courts themselves. We continue to work the fringes and kick the can down the road in trying to fix this problem. In Judy's email response that Paul was talking about, much we could debate, like Paul did, to our offer of reduced hours and days of play, the email offered no solutions, but indicated concern for the picklers who work and want to play pickleball after work, and for the picklers who like to play outside. There aren't any township requirements that we have to provide pickleball all hours of the day for people. There are options for those who want to play when the courts might be closed. We who live there have no options. We live there all of the time, and there is no other place for us to go. There are, however, nuisance laws concerning sound levels. No one is addressing the sound levels. We're just blowing this off as it's not an issue. This has been three years. Everything that we asked for in last month's meeting is just kind of common sense. If you ask me, it's not outlandish. You might think that there's malice in our tone toward the township or pickleball. That couldn't be further from the truth. What you're picking up is utter frustration that after three years, we are where we started. The sound levels exceed the nuisance limits. Your sound studies confirm this. What more do you need to take some action? We want the issue addressed, and we'd like it to be addressed now. We spoke to a sound consultant three years ago who basically said this would be very tough to remediate the sound there because of where the courts are. He said you couldn't move the courts to a more suitable location, 500 feet from home. That's the standard recommendation. These courts are 150 feet. He also said you could reduce the hours and there are days of play, but again, we refused that possibility as well, except every other Sunday. This solution isn't even ideal for us, because the noise doesn't go away. It just eases our pain that we experience each and every day. Last meeting, we came with viable solutions, solutions that many in the country are currently implementing. These are not outlandish ideas that we had, but what did we get? We got a pickleball tournament over the Labor Day weekend, and another one on September 28th. This isn't solving the problem, but rather, it's throwing salt on the wound. Tournaments bring better players. Better players volley longer and harder, and the sound is even much louder than normal. What I'd like to know is, the township knows this is a problem, yet we still have tournaments doing this. Like, where's the concern for the citizens that reside by the park? Although I was away this past weekend, this past week in California, so I wasn't here for the tournament physically, but I know that the tournament took place, because obviously I couldn't hear the sounds, but I could feel the pain of the sounds from my elderly neighbor who called me out there. He pleaded with me, "Jim, how can we stop this? It's constant, and it's torturing, and today is far worse than normal." This elderly neighbor who's not in the best of health, and his wife, no longer go outside due to the noise levels. I'm not actually mad at this, I am actually furious at this, that we could teach, that we could treat a township resident who's in poor health to remain a prisoner in his home, not even on his property. He can't even go outside. This is just not right. The mental anguish that you are inflicting on people is totally unfair. Aren't we all neighbors?
Mr. DiMarco, I do need you to conclude now, if you could.
I can. I can conclude with this. We are taxpaying citizens. We are not seeking special treatment. We, but rather, we're looking for the same treatment that every other township resident has, and that is their right to enjoy their property. If you can't bring the sound levels down, we don't have a problem with pickleball, it's the sound that we have a problem with. If you can't bring the sound down, then close the courts until you can. Again, we came in good faith with viable solutions. What solutions do you have that will put an end to our misery? We've waited three years, and the status quo of please wait, be patient, no longer applies. How do we get your focus to fix this problem?
Thank you, Mr. DiMarco. Our next speaker is Dave Og. All right. I will remind everybody to keep their cheers, their, their, their hisses, whatever, to themselves, say them to themselves. Anybody who gets up here has the right to speak, has the right to speak their mind. Everybody here speaking is speaking very respectfully. I ask everybody who's not speaking to do the same. Mr. Og.
After that, please hold all your applause. A wise man once said, a very wise man, "Pickleball is the scourge of suburbia." I'd like to start off with a few questions. First of all, are you guys all aware of the codes under, and you people too, under the Parks and Recreation? It explicitly says the tennis courts can never be used for anything other than tennis. Do you all get that, you pickleballers? You guys know that? Did you know before? It's in there. That's another one. Just ignore the rules? I know you're gonna say it's repurposed, but what does that mean? You can do whatever you want, and you just throw away all the codes because you can repurpose them? I'd like to start off with a few questions, and actually, that was one of them. Why is there such a concerted effort to keep the pickleball players happy when 75% of them, and that's a fact that we had proven to us, aren't in the township? 75% of them? Pickleball.
I will clear this room. If he says the moon is made of green cheese, shut up and don't say anything about it. You can get up when it's your time to speak, and you can tell me that it's made out of some other colored cheese, but don't do it again, or I swear to God I will clear this room. Mr. Og.
I didn't want to say, but never mind, I better not. All right. Yeah, we know for a fact that 75% of the people are from outside the township, and that really gets me. I brought that to some place time, then I'm paying my taxes so people from outside the township can come in here and annoy me. And that's just basic common sense. Why are there several township ordinances being violated and no action's been taken? The sound, the two, two that we've already mentioned. Is there a vote, or how do you all decide on how to act on these things? Do you vote on it?
Well, I, I will, we, we will comment to these questions when this is over, so just go ahead and ask them. Some of them are rhetorical, but some of them will answer.
Yes. What's the process when these ordinances are violated? Seems as to be we're setting a poor example. When Judy was campaigning, that's the first time we met her in the park three, 20 and a half years ago, she, the first thing she asked us was, "Do we have any concerns?" And pickleball. And we had a nice discussion, it felt, I naively felt positive about our concerns that was three summers ago, and we were very, very disappointed. We're also concerned, and this is very, very possible, and I've done research on this, and other people throughout the country are concerned too, on the decreasing value of our properties. Nobody, when I come, when it comes time to sell my house, nobody is gonna come to my house in the summer and hear that racket and realize, "Oh, we can't stand this," or "Take $10,000 off and we'll buy it." You know what I mean? It's, I'm gonna have to sell it in the winter and then trick those poor people. And it's happened where people have moved, and we're getting close to that ourselves. We put three years into this issue, and we're just asking for some compromise on the part of these guys who, I can't help but think they feel so entitled that they'll climb the fence when it's locked and they're not allowed to play. Or they'll play it on the tennis courts, which makes it even worse, because that's even closer to my house. And now they've even brought in temporary nets and put them on the basketball courts and play. These are very, very special people we're talking about here. They're very special.
Mr. Og, I will ask you to conclude.
Quit.
To conclude.
Okay. Let me just say that we aren't going away. And one more thing is, why are the rights of a woman from Newtown Square more important than me, a 70-year-old, a 70-year-old person that's lived in Newtown Square for 70, I mean, Pennsylvania, Harrisburg for 70?
I think I know where you're going with this, Mr. Og.
And Paddock Park for 50 years. We're not going away. This isn't gonna end. So let's not drag it out. Let's come up with some compromise.
Thank you, Mr. Og.
Oh, by the way, that wise man, did we all know who made that quote?
I was quoting the New York Times, just to be clear and be fair, but yes, I did say that. No, you didn't. I was quoting the New York Times when I, when I referred to it as the scourge of suburbia. Our next speaker is, ah, everybody hold their applause, Ms. Micklin. I wasn't kidding. Okay.
My name is Eileen Micklin. I've been a resident of the township for over 50 years. I'm an ambassador for USA Pickleball, which is a volunteer position, and I'm available to assist individuals, venues, townships, and all things pickleball. We have over 400 township pickleball players playing at township courts at Paddock, The Grange, and Westgate. Most of these folks are on our email list. We're able to send out information pertaining to indoor and outdoor pickleball in the township. Now, there are many, many more township residents that play. They are not on my list. These are just the ones that I can tell you for a fact, they're there. Pickleball was invented in 1965 as an intergenerational game. Any given time, you go, you will see parents playing with their children, and even grandparents playing with their grandchildren. Our players range, age range is 20s to one of our guys is 92. The average age of our players is 50s to 80s. Pickleball is called a drop-in sport. It is inclusive, as folks can go to the courts and join and play with other players. You don't need to get your own group together, which makes it completely different than any other racket or paddle sport. The benefits of pickleball include physical, emotional, and mental health. An example of areas includes improvement of balance and strength, improving cardiovascular health, immunity against infections and other medical disorders, lowering the blood pressure, reducing the risk of heart attacks and type 2 diabetes, postpones or protects against dementia, and promotes good emotional health. The social component of pickleball is usually mentioned as the most important. Okay? It is absolutely a blast. Most of us have made great friends, okay, that we see socially and even travel with. Lunches at all the Haver Town restaurants are the norm. The Mayo Clinic suggested that pickleball promotes longer life expectancy by six to 10 years due to social interactions and physical health benefits. Many of our other township players that were planning to come are at the Phillies game tonight. Tonight is pickleball night at Citizens Bank Park. It's just...
This?
I did.
Really?
I did.
Do you have anything else?
I don't. I mean, I, can I ask a question?
Well, you can ask it, as I said, kind of rhetorically, and we will do our best to answer it.
The number of 75% of the players there are out of township.
Yeah, we're, I mean, we're not gonna ask each other questions. If you have a question for the board, we'll take it under consideration.
No, I do not. We have one pickleball player there.
All right, well, I mean, I can't stop human nature, but if folks want to respond to people, they can simply snap their fingers, all right? But I don't otherwise want to hear any outbursts, but thank you, Ms. Micklin, for your comments. So as I promised, I would, I would, I would like to hear a couple more comments from folks who have things to say about pickleball. I'm just going to go to my left here, and anybody who wants to speak, let me say, speak raising the concerns about pickleball, somebody here on the left, show me a hand. Anybody on the right here, from the hand? Yes, ma'am. Yeah, please, that'd be fine.
Something like a lift. How you doing?
Very good.
My name is Albert Delmody. I live on Colfax Road in Haver Town and a resident for 50-some-plus years. I can tell you for a fact that living in the neighborhood was great. Lately, pickleball has been a surge, scourge, pardon me. It is really, today, I have pickleball players all day long. This is an off day. There aren't many children there old enough to play pickleball, but it seemed that we had plenty of people that, no tournaments, just were terrible. I mean, it went on all day. It's like a Chinese water test. Pretty bad. We'd like you to do something that can just listen to us, remediate this problem, and just get it fixed.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments. If I, now, if I show of hands, somebody who wants to speak positively about pickleball? Sir?
My name's Russ Young. I'm a retired dentist. I've worked in the county for 40 years, serving the people. I have to say that people who play at Paddock Park are, the preponderance of people are maybe 60 or 65 and older. They've earned the right and have paid taxes in the county for decades, and I think we've earned the right to play at the public courts. And I think it would be a shame to close this. I think I'd be open to some compromise, but I think we've earned the right to play in public parks in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, as I promised, I would take another comment from somebody who is critical of pickleball. Ma'am, I did see you earlier. No, sir, please. Madam, in the back. Now, again, everybody will have a right to speak later, I promise. I'm just trying to do some...
Well, my name is Camille DiMarco, and I live at 301 Colfax.
Is that a coincidence?
What's that?
Isn't that a coincidence?
Yeah, it is.
I tried to trade him in, but, but I really appreciate what that last man said, that he is willing to compromise. That is all we have asked. It doesn't matter how many people want pickleball, it, every, every place we had checked said pickleball courts should never be put in within five hundred feet of homes, that's standard. These are within a hundred and fifty feet of our homes, so we live with the tinging all day long. Do you know, I can't sit in my house and pay the bills, I have to go to the front with the window shut. I can't use my back porch anymore, I can't entertain people, because they come and they say, what is that noise? Even the people who play pickleball, they walk by my house and they said, oh, I'm so glad I don't live here. I, I went to the dentist yesterday, a car who, who boxed me in, I, was going my direction. Isn't it funny, you know where I ended up? My dentist is in Narbith, they pulled in the driveway a block away. That's Long Marion Township, I can't get out of my driveway. Now, I pre, all we ask is now, is for a compromise, and I think that's fair. We're getting no compromise, every other Sunday is not a compromise. So we presented a good compromise, are you willing to compromise? I am so glad the pickleball people are here today, we have asked for that, because maybe we can come to a compromise. It's, I don't care if there's a hundred people here, it is wrong, it was placed there and was wrong to do, but because we are told they're not going away, even though it's wrong, and even though the township said there's nowhere else they can put these courts, nowhere else, and people want to play, we don't dislike pickleballers, we like the sport, but we do not like it behind our house when we can't even think, we can't, we hear the noise when no one's even playing anymore. So please, as I end this, all I say is, Paddock Park now is bursting at the seams. The parking is terrible, the congestion is terrible, it's now almost like a multi-county pickleball destination rather than a Haverford Township Park.
Thank you, Mr. Oggi. Folks, please, I, and finally, I will take one more comment in favor of pickleball, madam? And again, let me repeat, everybody will have a chance later in the meeting to say whatever they'd like, yes?
Hello, good evening, appreciate your time. I've lived in the township since nineteen eighty-nine, and I'm here with pretty much everybody in this room, we play at Paddock, and we also play at The Grange, and I have to admit, I also played Radnor Township. But I, I appreciate this township, because, you know, my son went to schools here, the services that were allotted earlier this evening, and the safety of this township, but now that I've retired, I, it's nice, and I think most of the people here appreciate that there's something for people who have paid taxes for thirty, forty years in this township. Our kids use the recreation centers, and, and this parks, you know, we know you're limited land, and, you know, you probably could say that a park shouldn't be built within five hundred feet of a house either, but our township doesn't have the luxury of having large areas to build pickleball courts, or basketball courts, or tennis courts. I mean, when we're playing there in the summer, the sound of all the kids screaming and hollering, it's, it's a park, and, and we're just part of that now, we're just a little bit older, and we, we really do appreciate that you've given us this opportunity to have this interaction and the social aspect that this park and this recreation gives us. So I just want to say there's a lot of positives, and I know that, you know, there's sound, but I do think the bad insulation has done a great job. I mean, as I walk in, in the morning from Colfax, it is, it's, it's definitely muffled the sound, so I think that was a, a positive that you've done, and I think it worked out. So thank you.
You're welcome, thank you for your comments, and thank you all in the audience. As I said, we will return to this topic later in the meeting. The good news is, we don't have anything too controversial or any other presentations today, so we should actually be able to come back around to this topic fairly soon. I do appreciate everyone's respectful comments and their respectful reaction to those comments, so thank you, thank you again. We will now move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the Bureau of Fire update. We'll just wait a second to let people leave, I guess. Are we somewhere on the Bureau of Fire, are we?
Yeah, Brian's waiting until the...
Okay. Folks, I would ask respectfully, we are trying to continue at this meeting, if folks are staying, great, we welcome you and look forward to your comments later. If folks are, are leaving for the evening, please do so quietly, and we will proceed. Commissioner Gondik?
Okay. The Haverford Township Bureau of Fire report for August of twenty twenty-four, total incidences were sixty-eight, we had fifty-two township incidences, and sixteen out-of-t township mutual aid incidents. The average personnel per call was fifteen, we had nine hundred sixty-nine personnel hours committed.
Commissioner Gondik, excuse me for one second. Please, ladies and gentlemen, we're running a meeting. Yeah, no problem, just... Thank you, and thank you for your comments, sir. All right, Mr. Gondik, the floor is yours again. Want to start over, though?
So the Haverford Township Bureau of Fire report for August of twenty twenty-four, the total incidents were sixty-eight, fifty-two township incidents, and sixteen out-of-t township mutual aid incidents. The average personnel per call was fifteen, we had nine hundred sixty-nine personnel hours committed to incidents, and four hundred ninety-eight personnel hours committed to training. The Bureau of Fire provided mutual aid to three working fires within Delaware County and a cover assignment in Long Marion Township. And I would just make a brief reference that, with regards to the letters of commendation that were issued earlier, the AED that was utilized to save that gentleman's life was one of the forty that this board approved and purchased recently to resupply our first responders. That's the report.
Thank you, Commissioner Gondik. Any questions or comments for Brian? Hearing none. I know our township auditor is not with us today, and to my knowledge, did not share any concerns or questions or issues that weren't, that remained unaddressed for him, so I assume...
Mr. Anderson did ask his questions, as he does to me every month, I did answer them, and I have a selection of invoices that he will look at when he comes next month, as he does every month, he picks a selection to review.
Okay, thank you for that information, Ms. Cuthbertson. Okay, our next item on our agenda is the Township Manager Update.
Leaf season is just about here, believe it or not.
How did that happen?
We're gonna follow the same, same process we did last year, very similar process, it was very efficient, and I do want to thank Dan Marianni and Tim Molesky for working with us on that. The other item is the glass bin, so, as you know, the glass bin that's been outside for several months was scheduled to leave the end of August, we've worked with the Pennsylvania Resources Council, and it's going to remain with us, and it's been so successful here that we're gonna keep it indefinitely, so we'll see how things go for the rest of the year. And finally, tomorrow at seven PM is the Fourth Annual Haverford Township Police Department versus Haverford High School Football Game, and that'll take place on the turf field behind the middle school and all...
It doesn't seem very fair, do they wear vests and carry guns?
The football players are better.
We check our weapons, Commissioner.
All right, all right, it's good to know.
It's all right.
Thank you, thank you, Manager Herman. Next item for our agenda is the approval of our regular meeting minutes of August twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Actually, before we do that, I should say, at the conclusion of our last work session last week, we did hold, we as a board held an executive session to speak about an issue involving real estate, and it is my duty to report on those after we do that, we did do that at the end of last meeting, I should have reported it at the start of this one, but the agenda, the approval of minutes reminded me of that. So now, I will consider approval of our minutes for our regular meeting of August twelfth, twenty twenty-four.
I will to adopt the meeting minutes of August twelfth.
We have a motion and a, and a second, any additions, deletions, qualifications? Hearing none, Mr. Herman?
As I was not present, I will abstain.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb?
I'll abstain too, since I wasn't here.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here. Oh, no. Yes.
One here, one yes.
Been a long night already, right? So that would be a yes for me, I think it passes. Our next consideration will be approval of warrants, Mr. McCloskey?
Motion to approve the following warrant, number nine, twenty twenty-four, totaling five million, four hundred ninety-five thousand, six hundred and six dollars and zero and one cent. General and sewer fund payroll for August fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars. General and sewer fund payroll for August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of seven hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and one dollar and ninety-seven cents. General fund disbursements in the amount of one million, four hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-one cents. Sewer fund disbursements in the amount of six hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents. Community development block grant fund disbursement in the amount of three hundred and three thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents. Capital projects fund disbursement in the amount of one million, four hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and forty cents. American Rescue Plan Fund disbursement in the amount of a hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and five cents. Credit card statement ending August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of twenty thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars and ten cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any questions or comments on these warrants? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondik?
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here, yes. All right, the next item for our consideration is our annual minimum municipal obligation. This was talked about at last week's meeting, but may be worth a quick revisit of that, Ms. Cuthbertson, and then we'll consider, well, let's hear the motion. Let's, right, someone present the motion, and then we'll have a quick discussion.
Motion to approve annual certification of minimum municipal obligation as prepared by Thomas J. Anderson and Associates in the amount of three million, three hundred and fifty-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars for the police pension plan, one million, seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars for the non-uniform defined benefit pension plan, and two hundred and nine thousand, fifty dollars for the non-uniform defined contribution pension plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Cuthbertson, just a, a quick explanation of the MMO this year?
Sure, this action is taken by this board and virtually every other elected board in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania with a pension plan, certifying the MMO, so this is essentially acknowledging what you must include in next year's budget, the minimum amount of funding in next year's budget. Whether we will be able to fund over the minimum will be discussed as part of the budget process later on in the fall.
And that is something traditionally we try to do?
Yes, we have passed several budget cycles, we've tried to increase our funding, to get our funding percentage up. As I said, it's a discussion we'll have during this budget season, as we do through every other one, whether we're able to do that this year.
Are you comfortable characterizing the integrity of our, of our pension funds now?
Yes, I think we're very comfortable where we're at with our pension funds, past, if you recall, without getting too, too technical on everybody, a large part of the calculation comes from an actuarial valuation that's done every two years, we're still working off the January first of twenty-three's valuation, and if everybody remembers, which probably everybody with a 401K or investments of any kind remembers, twenty-one and twenty-two were rough, were rough years for investments, they were double-digit losses in both of those years. So our next actuarial evaluation will be dated one, one of twenty-five. We, along with hopefully everybody else, had good returns on their investments in twenty-three, and we're looking good in twenty-four, but we, we still have another quarter to go, so hopefully we can have a good year in twenty-four as well, and our MMO can stabilize next year.
I seem to recall we lowered our expectations, right, our expected return back then, two years ago, and took some other steps that would be considered very conservative in terms of money management.
Part of the actuarial evaluation is establishing what's a rate of return, or expected rate of return, and we're talking back fifteen, twenty years, it was high, some may say a little artificially high, so we've taken steps with each subsequent actuarial evaluation to bring that down to a more reasonable level, and now we sit at seven and a half percent. So that's what our plan expects to earn every year, so years that it doesn't puts us behind the eight ball, years that it does gets us a little ahead. So, as I said, the, the last valuation, we got hit pretty hard with double-digit losses in both of the years that it covers. Our next AV should have two very good years, so again, we hope after this MMO in two thousand and twenty-five, the next few years should stabilize a bit.
Thank you for that very informative presentation, any questions or comments from my colleagues? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondik?
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. We have one ordinance for consideration tonight, Ordinance P-12 of twenty twenty-four.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the second reading of Ordinance Number P-12, twenty twenty-four, authorizing traffic restrictions on the following highways, stop intersection on Morris Road West at the intersection of Woodcrest Avenue.
All right, we have a motion and a second, this is also a second reading, so we've been through this before, any questions or comments? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondik?
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Now we have several resolutions for our consideration, first resolution, twenty-three ninety-two, relates to Haverford Township Day, I will entertain the motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number twenty-three ninety-two, twenty twenty-four, that the Board of Commissioners designate Haverford Police Department's Chief John Viola to execute any and all documents with PennDOT and be responsible for the safety and welfare of residents utilizing state highways on Haverford Township Day, Saturday, October fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any questions or comments on this resolution? Obviously, this is something we do every day for Township Day, Mr. Herman?
Commissioner Gondik?
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Next for our consideration, Resolution twenty-three ninety-three of twenty twenty-four, this is the use of ARPA funds for a Cobb's Creek Interceptor.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number twenty-three ninety-three, twenty twenty-four, approving the use of funds from the township's ARPA plan, ARPA fund allocation as follows. Cobb's Creek Interceptor stabilization project in an amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which will include construction costs of ninety-five thousand, eight hundred dollars plus design engineering and construction management expenses.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? No, this is something we discussed in our work session last week. Um, Mr. Herman, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Our next resolution for our consideration is 2394, um, and it relates to traffic signal authorization.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 2394 dash 2824, authorizing David R. Berman, Township Manager, to submit application for traffic signal approval to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation and to sign such application.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. For our consideration next, resolution number 2395, an amended plan approval for Five Landillo Road.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion to adopt resolution number 2395 dash 2024, approving revisions to recorded plans for Landillo Road Development Partners LLC for the minor subdivision and development of Five Landillo Road into thirteen apartments, subject to the conditions recommended within by the township engineer.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second. Um, any questions or comments about this, uh, this plan?
Do we have a little bit further description of what the amendments are for any residents who are listening?
I would certainly be happy to do that, Commissioner. So this plan was originally approved back in 2016 by the board with a set of resolutions or a set of requirements to it, which included a few things as the developer went along, he felt he did not need. Um, one was additional parking, originally was approved with twenty-six spaces. Um, as he developed the property, he, um, he made a, uh, an argument that he could reduce that amount of parking by about half. So he's looking, he was looking for approximately nineteen spaces. So that was one, one of the changes. The other change was a change to the driveway width, um, from a twenty-four foot width or twenty-four foot minimum, um, and I believe it's at eighteen now, which was looked at by the township staff and the fire department and everything, and they felt that was adequate. And then the third thing, which was just simply a part of the, um, original approval, was lighting there, which has not been completed as of yet. So those were the three major things that were changed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If I may ask, with regards to the parking realignment, um, as a township engineer, are you comfortable with that in that area?
Well, the, we looked at the parking, and the parking is both a combination of new parking, which was adjacent to the residential section off of, I forget the, the road over there, but it sits on the side of the building. There's some parking in the back of the building. And then the bigger issue was the parking in the front of the building there. Um, it's my understanding the residents were a little opposed to that because of light glare and and such, and it was kind of, it was kind of difficult. Um, in the time that he, from when he was dwelt, I believe a number of those, those apartments were occupied, and the parking in the front was rarely used. Um, it was along the side and primarily in the back. Um, it's difficult to access, and quite frankly, if it's not needed, it's probably, it's probably best because it does provide some more room for, um, not, not pervious cover, number one, and number two, it gives you a little more access in front, um, for emergency vehicles or delivery vehicles or such. So to answer your question, I would say we're comfortable with that, Mr. Gondak.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else with any questions or comments? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Next, for our consideration, is resolution number 2396 of 2024. This is preliminary and final land development for the Haverford Middle School addition.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 2396, 2024, approving the preliminary final land development plan for the Haverford School District for a building addition at the Haverford Middle School at seventeen oh one Darby Road, Havertown, subject to waivers contained within said resolution. Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second. Um, if anyone has any questions for Mr. Matthews, he was here last week to answer questions about this, um, uh, about this development, uh, plan. Um, so I'm sure he will be available to answer any questions. Um, but, uh, so does anyone have any? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Okay, next for our consideration is resolution number 2397 of 2024. This is, uh, uh, the use of, uh, ARPA funds, um, for Recreation Department.
Mr. President, uh, resolution number 2397, 2024, ARPA slash Recreation Department, Brookline Park Playground Equipment and Replacement Slide at Andy Lewis Community Park. Motion to adopt resolution number 2397, 2024, for approving the use of funds from the township's American Rescue Plan Fund allocation as follows. Freedom Playground at Andy Lewis Community Park, triple slide replacement, six thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars. Brookline Park Playground Safety Surfacing, including Stone Base, ninety-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments about this resolution? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Um, our next resolution for our consideration is 2398 of 2024, also involves the use of American Rescue Plan Funds, uh, and it is the, uh, purchase of an ambulance prep package and chassis.
Motion, uh, motion to adopt resolution number 2398 of 2024, approving the use of funds from the township's American Rescue Fund, Rescue Plan Fund allocation as follows. Super Duty F-550 four-by-four chassis with ambulance prep package, total purchase amount of sixty thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I know we discussed this last week. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Uh, next consideration, resolution number 2399 of 2024, also involving the use of American Rescue Plan Funds, um, and this is for the police department and the, uh, purchase of charging stations.
Motion to adopt resolution number 2399, 2024, approving the use of funds from the township's American Rescue Plan Fund allocation as follows. Electric infrastructure improvements for the installation of five dual port electric vehicle charging stations for emergency response vehicles in the amount not to exceed a hundred and seventeen thousand, which will include construction costs of eighty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars plus design, engineering, and construction management expenses.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments about this? We also discussed this last week. Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Uh, so that finishes, uh, resolutions, uh, the part of our agenda. Uh, we will now move to consider one agreement, and then we will do some contract awards. Uh, so, um, we have before us, um, uh, an agreement.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion to execute the Certified Local Government Grant Program Agreement between Haverford Township and the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I know this was discussed last week. Does anybody else want to share anything else on this, uh, this agreement? Hearing nothing.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Uh, the next thing we will be doing is contract awards. Um, for folks who think they are, um, hearing us repeat ourselves, these will be the contract awards that are associated with the resolutions we passed earlier tonight, um, to dedicate the use of American Rescue Plan Funds. So, uh, we will begin with Cobb's Creek Interceptor stabilization.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to award the Cobb's Creek Interceptor Stabilization Contract to Brightfields, Inc. in the amount of ninety-five thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Um, next contract to consider is the Darby Creek Trail Southern Extension, Phase Two.
Mr. President, motion to award the Darby Creek Trail Southern Extension, Phase Two, contract to Frania Incorporated in the amount of two hundred and sixty-four thousand, five hundred dollars.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Somebody just described for me again what this, um, uh, I guess the, the scope of this project.
Share microphones.
Right.
Uh, this extension to the Darby Creek Trail is, um, starting at McDonald Field, where we just completed an extension, and it's going to go past the house on seventeen forty-four Vermont. And then we're going to come from the other end at Merry Place, where the trail ends currently, and I'm going to bring it through Merry Place to the volleyball courts, leaving that center section to do at a later time when we both get funding and figure out the engineering, because that's the trickier portion of the trail building there. So we're still looking for funding to finish that last piece, and then there's some more engineering to do. So we're doing the pieces that we can do now with the grant that we have from Delaware County and also a grant we have from DVR PC. And both of those granters have allowed us to do this way we're proceeding with this project, knowing that we're looking forward to getting it done later when we get more funding.
This will leave a gap, is that right?
Yeah, so it'll leave a gap from at the end of Merry Place to just to the house on seventeen forty-four Vermont Road.
How big's that gap?
That gap's probably about eight or nine hundred feet.
Um, okay, thank you. Uh, any other questions or comments on this, uh, on this contract? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Um, next contract for our consideration is a contract, uh, for the police department and, uh, charging stations.
Smo- mo- motion to award the Ha- Haverford Township Police Parking Upgrades for five ele- ele- or, or electric veh- veh- vehicle char- charging stations to Hobbs and Com- Company in the amount of eighty-nine thousand, 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 five hundred dollars.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second. Uh, any questions or comments on this? Obviously, we just spoke about it a minute ago. Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Uh, our next contract, uh, is for lead-based paint testing for the Community Development Block Grant Housing Rehabilitation Program.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to accept Dunleavy Associates' recommendation and award a professional services contract for lead-based paint testing for the CDBG Housing Rehabilitation Program to ARC Environmental.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments about this? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.[1517.84]
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Uh, now we move to purchases, um, uh, and they are, uh, done by, uh, by department. So, the first, uh, department of ours, Public Works, um, has, uh, I guess, two purchases to consider, um, replacement of streetlight poles.
Motion to authorize the purchase of two streetlight poles and two arms from Turtle T and H Philadelphia in the amount of ten thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on this? This is also something we talked about at last week's work session. Um, Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. We also have consideration of, um, uh, EMS ambulance chassis.
Motion authorize the purchase of one two thousand twenty-four Ford Super Duty F-550 four-by-four chassis with ambulance prep package from, um, Hondra Fleet under Coast Star's contract number zero-one-three dash E-two-three dash two-eight-zero in the amount of sixty thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on this, uh, chassis? I know we discussed it last week. Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Uh, Recreation Department has two, um, purchases for us to consider. First one, um, involving Brookline Park.
Mr. President, motion to authorize the purchase of rubber safety surfacing for Brookline Park from General Recreation Incorporated in the amount of ninety-four thousand two-hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Second. Uh, we have a motion and, do we have a second? Yes, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Uh, we have another, uh, purchase for the Recreation Department involving Jack McDonald Field.
Uh, Mr. President, motion to authorize the purchase of replacement sight lights at Jack McDonald Field from Denny Electric Supply under Coast Star's contract number zero-one-eight dash E-twenty-two dash oh-one-seven in the amount of twenty thousand six hundred dollars.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on these, uh, lights? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. That concludes the purchases portion of, uh, the agenda. Uh, the next, uh, item on the agenda, appointments, uh, I will take that down since, um, my latest, um, request was turned down by someone.
Come on!
Beginning to really feel somewhat rejected on this. Um, and which brings us back to a continuation of the Citizens Forum for non-agenda items. Um, so for those of you who stuck it out and, uh, feel, um, compelled to speak on any topic, um, and despite the no show of hands earlier, you can speak on any topic and not just pickleball if you'd like. Uh, but the floor is open now. Um, I will, as always, start on my left. Is there anyone on the left who would like to speak? Yes. Uh, sorry, right here. Yes. Um, Mr. DeMarco, are you planning on getting back up? No, no, you're up. Yeah, no, go right ahead.
My name's Michael Lee. I'm a Haverford Township resident.
Yes.
You know, I don't play pickleball and I don't live near Paddock, uh, Paddock Park, but I have been by courts and they are very noisy. And I was here last month and I heard your appeal, and it seemed to me at the time that they were bending over backwards. I mean, just for reduced hours and stuff like that. And I just see the only solution to this is that you have to do something about sound abatement. I understand why people want to play pickleball. You know, if I played, I would want the courts too, but the residents have a point too. You know, I just, and it's sound abatement's the only way to go, and you have to get down to the order next level.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Lee, for your, um, for your comments. Um, so sticking with the left, I, I know somebody in the back. Actually, I'm gonna sit you for a second, Mr. DeMarco. Yes, in the back? Yes, sir.
Hi, um, my name's Vincent DeMarco. No relation. I'm the third DeMarco. I don't exactly know why. Um, uh, we'll get into it later. Um, I am, uh, fortunate enough to be one of the younger members and a new member to Haverford Township, um, having just moved to Haverford Township two years ago, and, um, one of the things that has helped me grow as part of this community has been learning to play pickleball at the area Y as well as Paddock Park. It's where I play. It's where I taught my wife, who is sitting in the back, to play. It's where, when my dad comes to visit, we play. When my friends come to visit, we play at Paddock Park, because it's close enough to my home to be able to bike to, to be able to access. And I do appreciate that pickleball can be loud, but it is important. And to echo one of the dedications at the beginning, uh, to the, uh, hockey team, it lets us grow into skilled athletes and upstanding members of our community. So, thank you.
Uh, thank you. I think the rest of the DeMarco clan might ban you for that, but, um, yeah. Yeah, how about that? Um, I'm going to, sir in the hat, yes, would you like to come forward?
Hello, my name's Ed Manley. I'm township resident. I live on Fairview Avenue. And, uh, I'm late to this whole situation, so it's apparently been going on for a couple of years now. When I read through the notes on the website, I could find township website. So, as I was listening today, I just had a couple of questions I like to put out. Um, appreciate your concerns, Mr. Kelly, Mr. DeMarco, correct? Okay, one of the ones that, that jumped out, you guys offered some type of solutions. Can, can I get that? Can I see that? Do you have it, or does the township have it?
Actually, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm just, you guys, you guys can have a great time together afterwards. I, I mean, there are all.
If anybody's a copy, that'd be great to see.
Yeah, no, no, and I, and basically, uh, uh, better sound, reduce days without pickleball, additional days without pickleball, restricting time, um, trying to move it to different places to park, a lot of different alternatives, and, and not, Mr. DeMarco's credit.
At any of the parks.
No outright bans.
No, okay, I, I noted that till you said that, no outright bans. Um, it was mentioned several times by several people about the noise ordinance. Does anybody have what the number is that you're not supposed to go above? Do we know that by any chance? Fifty-seven decibels? Okay, that's what I think I wrote down, but I wasn't sure. Um, so who did the noise testing? Did the township pay for it, or did you guys pay for that township? Township pay for it, okay. Is there copies of that available anywhere? I'm curious, because I think I'm some new to the study here. So, I don't want to get stuck up. I see three lawyers and a PhD. I don't want to trip myself up, because you guys will get me. So, um.
Nobody's interested in getting you.
Okay, he will come back and like, oh, you said this, but, uh.
And with that hat, I don't think it'll really bother you anyway.
I'd never go out without a hat, so. So, anyway, um, they, they have legitimate concerns. I get it. I've played at Paddock. I've played at Grange. I've played at Westgate. Remarkably, the courts at Westgate and Grange, the houses are much closer. Has there been any kind of comments from the residents there about the noise?
I'm not sure.
Okay, so one of the solutions through the summer was, I don't know who came up with it, is the rec department about closing every other Sunday in the summer, and all the Paddock people are going to the Grange, which to me is illogical, because you're just moving the same number of bodies to a different spot with the same amount of noise. So, but has anybody complained that those, okay, that, that curiosity, so, um, let me see. Uh, so it's fifty-seven, so this is the decibel thing, back to the, because of my reading, hitting the pickleball and hitting the tennis ball are the same decibel lovers. It's the timbre that's different. It, it is. It, it's different. It's the same decibel, but the timbre's different. It's, it's the crack versus the thud, but it's the same amount of sound that comes out. I, I appreciate, I know what you're saying. I agree that it's, it's, it could be a headache. I, I understand. So, there has to be some way to figure that out. I don't know. Um, somebody, I didn't catch the name, uh, was, was Mr. Hyde or? Uh, okay, I'm sorry. I misheard. My hearing's not great. Um, seventy-five percent are not township residents. Is there any way to prove that?
It came from the Haverford Township Police Department.
How the?
I, I, again, I appreciate this.
All right, I just, I'm just curious. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, see, yeah, see, that's where I'm getting at. So, that's, I'm curious. I'd love to see how that was accumulated, that, that research. Um, uh, I talked to Eileen a little bit afterwards to get onto her list, because I don't, I said, where's this mysterious list? I don't know. But, uh, so parking at the park is bad. Um, and it's, it's obviously just gonna end up going through Parks and Recreation Department if, if it's not already started down that path. Is Brian Barrett the head of the, that department?
Mr. Barrett is the head of our department. I am gonna ask you to, to wrap up your.
Yeah, that, that's on at the end.
Anybody is available to you afterwards?
Okay, that, that's fine. I, I, I'm so late to this game, I didn't realize it's been going on for two years. Last question, has, have the neighbors, um, obtained legal representation for this? Have they?
I, I don't know, and until I hear otherwise, it's kind of not our.
All right, I'm just curious, because then that's a whole nother level of intensity that, you know, that gets, that gets out of, it gets, starts getting nasty at that. I know, I'm not trying to put you down for being a lawyer, but it, it raises the whole.
I didn't take it that way.
No, it's a whole new, whole new thing once you get the, the law involved with elite, you know, attorneys and start firing things back and forth. So, I was just, I'm curious. I, I, I didn't realize it's been going on for so long. So, I just was like, oh, I should come in. I saw the, uh, message somewhere, and all the people that left. I, I've played with them, against them, I know them. Um, but I'm real curious. There, there's gotta be solutions, and they, I, if I can get your ideas after this, that'd be great.
I think it would be wonderful if the folks got together after this, after this meeting and, and, and talked about compromises. You're a player, and that would be good. I do want to move on to other folks.
Sure, no problem.
Get a chance to speak. Thank you for your comments and questions. Um, is there anybody else on the left-hand side who'd like to speak? I know you want to come back up, Mr. DeMarco. You promised two seconds. I won't hold you in two seconds. You're good? Um, so over here on the right, is there anybody who, yes?
Shell Alvarez, you know, I'm a resident of the township a long time. I'm not speaking about pickleball.
Really?
No. On behalf of myself as a member of the Parks Board, Parks and Recreation Board, and of the Brookline Park Steering Committee, I want to thank you all for voting to spend money and start the development of the Brookline Park. This is something near and dear to my heart, and I can't wait till we see what we can do with the park beyond just the playground. But, and I know we've begun doing perk tests to see about the, um, stormwater management, so everything's going in the right direction, and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Here, you're welcome. Um, anybody else on the right side of the room would like to speak on any topic? Yes, now.
Hi, I'm Susan Schmier. I live at Woodley in Colfax, and, um, I'm a pickleballer, but I'm kind of stuck on the legality. Is this five hundred feet a law? It's not a law? Is it a regulation?
I, I don't believe it is. Uh, I believe it is a, 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 a recommendation among, uh, I, I think it's, the risk of using a word I shouldn't use, I, it, it seems to be, it seems to be, um, characterized to us as a standard for the amount of, for the amount of distance you want between pickleball courts.
It's loosey-goosey. It's not carp and stuff. That's, that's.
And, yeah, and, and, and for the, you know, as was mentioned earlier, just saying that, um, for many of our parks, there are very few places more than five hundred feet away from, from homes, because of the size of our parks, but, um, it is a legitimate point and obviously a, a standard that has been bandied about by a number of folks.
I just wondered if it was in the township rules.
Uh, it, it is not in our township code, as far as I am aware. Um, anybody else on the right who would like to speak? Um, so one last time, anybody on the left still moved? Um, ma'am, in the back? It's another DeMarco. Be ready.
I actually haven't changed my name yet, so.
Wow, my, that was, my God, that was so prehistoric of me. I apologize. Please, welcome.
Thank you. Um, Jamie Vander, could, could call me Jamie DeMarco if you wanted to. Not offended by that. Um, regarding pickleball, my comment here is team compromise. Compromise is good, but since we could speak on any subject and you said I could ask questions, um, are we doing the shade tree lottery this fall?
Oh, it's a fair question.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. That's all I wanted to know.
Yeah, right. You could put an entire line of shade trees between pickleball and the people I'm.
Mr. DeMarco wanted to stand back up.
And I, Mr. DeMarco, uh, well, and then I will go to you. Go ahead.
No, it's quite, uh, either way. Well, first of all, when you get fired up, you lose your sense of etiquette. So, first, wanted to thank everyone for allowing us to come appear and speak to everyone on this topic. Uh, the second thing I just wanted to say, in what we proposed last meeting, about the reduced times, everybody looks at it from the point of view what we're taking away, but if you really look at the numbers, there's like eight hours of pickleball every single day of the year, and at the peak, June twenty-first, there's like five additional hours for the residents that diminishes as the daylight goes down. So, that was the other point I wanted to make, if you're thinking about this. And the last thing was, just wanted to know, what is the next step? Who looks at what we're gonna, what's gonna happen, and when would we know what might be happening, if anything, in regard to this?
Um, I can't predict with certainty, uh, you know, a timeline, but I mean, our rec department is, um, obviously is, um, is hearing all of this. All of us on this board are hearing everything you have to say. While it is an old problem, I admit, it was last month before, you know, it was really brought to my attention to the, um, in the amount that it was. Um, so, uh, as I had said earlier, there's not anything planned on the agenda. Somebody asked a question earlier about like, what do we do? How do we do these things? We do not pass laws and ordinances and resolutions and purchases and everything about, you know, how we individually run our parks. We count on our parks and rec department to do those things. They're still gonna come to us on bigger issues like this, or if we have to set policy. This has obviously started a conversation here on the board and at the township, and, um, uh, what I kind of promise you is that it's being taken seriously. Um, and I, I can't promise you more without ending up being wrong.
Okay, no, I understand that. I, I just don't want it to drag on for years and months. That's all. And that's why I was just curious about what the timeframe might be.
I understand that.
Because from our point of view, it's like, right.
Tomorrow's not soon enough. I understand that.
Okay.
Yeah, and I don't say that to be funny.
No, 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 I get it. I would say the same thing. Okay. Well, thank you for your time, everyone.
Uh, you're most welcome. Ma'am?
Hello, I'm Eileen Burrows. I've been a resident of Haverford Township for over forty years now, and, um, I know I might be repeating myself, because there has been talk, and sorry to bring up the pickleball again, I just have to emphasize how important it is to folks like me who are retired and, and how much this is, this is now a part of our lives. And, and it's not, excuse me, and, and the reason it's, there's so much pickleball is because it, it is so popular. It's one of the sports that folks my age and beyond can do, that it's not really hard on the joints, and it's not hard on your physique, that you can do it well into your eighties. And so, it's one of those few, um, enjoyable sports. Uh, I'm sure, you know, people could say, well, I lift weights, or I go to the gym, or I, I go to an exercise class. They're pretty boring, you know? It, it, it's not as mentally and socially and competitively, um, as much as other activities, which is why it is so important. And personally, uh, I was, you know, my physical health, you know, sitting for forty years at a desk was killing me, and so this was one of the things that really brought back my health. My, um, bone density has increased. Uh, I was borderline diabetes, now I'm no longer. Uh, there's just, and plus, you know, the social aspect of, of being, uh, a resident of the township and meeting people I've never met before the forty years that I've been in this township. So, I cannot emphasize enough how important this is to so many of us in this township. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Um, and was there another comment in the audience, Mrs. DeMarco?
Respectfully, I say pickleball's a wonderful sport. It's great mentally, physically. We have nothing against pickleball. I'm a retired nurse that, are you just retired? I just retired too. So, I would like to enjoy my home too. If you like pickleball, it's great, but it's not great if it disturbs us. If we live here and we have to hear it constantly, I don't think you understand the severity of it, and after three years, we can't hear anymore that it's being monitored. We really can't. We come here in respectfully saying, please, please, please do something. We can't wait anymore. Thank you for listening, and we appreciate it.
You're welcome. Mr. Kelly?
I think somebody put a lot of fear into this room tonight. Four of us signed up to speak, and all of a sudden the room was full, thinking that pickleball was gonna be removed from Haverford Township. We explained what the issues are clearly, all fact, no spin, and the comments are like, I need my pickleball. I understand that. Everybody came here in a car tonight. If the paddock courts closed, they could take a car and drive to the other courts, or alternate courts, as Judy has mentioned. So, the paddock, uh, conglomerate, I'm, I'm confused. I don't understand why, if they went away, it's not as if they have nowhere else to play. Uh, I'm, I'm not getting it. I'm not getting it. There are, there are ten other courts in the township, and most of those people left, so I can't get an answer.
Uh, no, I, uh, thank you. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Kelly. Um, is there anybody else who'd like to, uh, speak on this or any topic? Mr. Lee?
I just wanted, wanted to say the issue is noise, and if you're gonna shift everybody over to Westgate Park or someplace else, you're just gonna have a noise problem there too. See, the issue is figuring out how we can accommodate the people who want to play pickleball and have it quiet enough for the rest of residents. I mean, that's really your charge here. It's, uh, you know, so.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Oh, sir. No, sorry, Mr. Lee, grab a seat. You are sir, but calling on this gentleman.
Hi, my name is Dev. Um, I, I, I did hear a lot of people talk about, um, the, the older people here playing pickleball, and I did have at least one person who was relatively younger talk about pickleball, so I thought I'd come and, um, expe- uh, share my experience too. Um, I've recently started playing pickleball, and, um, um, you know, Paddock Park is closest to my home, and that's where I went and played. Um, one to- one point that came up was, hey, can we go to other places too? Obviously, we can go to other places too. Um, the, 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 the point is, if we have a problem and we're trying to solve it, I don't think we should solve it as a Paddock Park problem. It, if, if you're trying to solve it, it's a, it's a whole township problem. Wherever we want to go to play, we'll have the same problem. So, if we say, hey, this is causing a, you know, problem in Paddock Park, like next day it's gonna be, this is a problem in another place. Um, so I don't think we should deal with it at all, as. So, I don't think we should deal with it at all, at all as an issue in just one place. The second thing is, of all the different activities you can do, being newer in Havertown, pickleball was one of the sports where you could meet people of different ages. There were people who were young, just out of college, playing pickleball, like, people in thirties, forties, like us playing pickleball. And older gentlemen, older ladies, who you generally don't get to interact with and know about, retired people. And that's a great interaction, which otherwise we do not get, and pickleball's been giving a lot of that to us. So, you know, my perspective is, we love playing pickleball and we should not try to solve the problem as one area problem, it's a, it's a problem as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think, I think I'll move on to the agenda now, to new business. Is there anybody on the board who has any new business to bring before us? Hearing none, I will move to my colleagues' individual for other business, sorry about that. Mr. Gondik, any other business?
I just want to welcome all of the students back to school, welcome back all the educators along with them, and congratulate all of the parents who survived another summer and now have their kids back in school. Also, I want to extend a congratulations to the Haverford Hawks and the Grange Estate for being able to celebrate their fiftieth anniversary this year. It's a very impressive accomplishment. On a activities note, the one, only thing I really have is the Westgate Hills Civic Association is hosting a movie in the park night on September 28th. It starts at 7:00 PM and this time they're showing Shrek. They do these movies in the park a few times a year, they're always great events, they're obviously family friendly, I encourage people to go out and enjoy one of the last times you can get outside before the cold weather starts to hit. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Gondik. Mr. Forsty Grubb?
I'd like to thank everyone who came out for the Pennsy Trail Bridge opening celebration on Saturday morning. It was a very well-attended event with at least two hundred and maybe three hundred people. It was wonderful to see everyone there, to come together and mark the opening of that bridge over Manoa Road, which allows people to get back and forth easily without crossing that very busy street. It's also really nice to have a bridge high enough that any truck can go under without getting stuck, as has happened on bridges, on that bridge that was there previously. I also want to give a huge shout out to the Parks and Rec Department, led by Brian Barrett and Eileen Matola, and for putting together a wonderful event for everyone. And I also want to thank everyone on the township, like Amy Cuthbertson and Dave Berman for all their work, making sure that became a reality in a, in a physically responsible manner. I also welcome all students back to the classroom. It's, it's a wonderful time of year where there's always that renewal and excitement. Also, Election Day is around the corner, so I exhort everyone to check their voter registration and maybe register for a mail-in ballot. If you Google PA Voter Services, you can find all the information you need. The last day to register to vote is October 21st. And October 29th is the last day to request a mail-in or absentee ballot. So, please check, check your voter registration so that you are ready to vote in November, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Forsty Grubb. Commissioner McCloskey?
Yeah, I just, I do want to echo Commissioner Forsty Grubb's appreciation for everyone involved in the Pennsy Trail event on Saturday. It was a great event, a lot of people had a hand in, in getting that together and the bridges, you know, a lot of work went into it to get to that point, and it was worthy of a celebration. And I think the overwhelming positivity about the bridge itself is shared by many of the residents who have now used it and been able to use the trail. And it just highlights, I've talked about this the, the last couple of months, I mean, there's a lot of great things happening in this town, and I think sometimes it's important to, to take a step back and just appreciate it, appreciate the, the various projects we have going on. I mean, even Saturday, you know, I went from the ribbon cutting of, of a Pennsy Trail that saw hundreds of people walking outside, up and down the trail, through the heart of our township, and it, you know, we're, we can extend it even farther, and this bridge really incorporates the neighborhood to other parts of the neighborhood and eliminates crossing over busy roads. And then later in the afternoon, you know, I walked three blocks from my house and there's a music festival that's going on all day and attracting people from this township and all over the greater area to celebrate what we have going on in this town. And I think that's a tribute to a lot of people, a tribute to the residents, but also just an appreciation for, you know, the, the desirability to be in Havertown, and, and that's kind of cool for, for somebody who grew up here in the nineties. The concept of people wanting to come to Havertown for dinner, or bars, or music festivals is still a little crazy to think about, but, you know, that, that's where we're living these days, and it's something that benefits everybody in the community. You know, and we have events coming up, the library's going well, we have Haverford Township Day coming up, so a lot of good things happening in Haverford Township, hope everybody has a good month.
Thank you, Commissioner McCloskey. Commissioner Caveter?
Thank you, and I keep my comments brief, I appreciated hearing everyone's comments tonight about the, about pickleball, and I want to talk a little bit about 5Ks coming up. On September 21st, the St. Coleman John Newman Saint Stomp, it is their annual fundraiser 5K, it's on Saturday, September 21st at 9:00 AM. It's a really fundraiser if you have a desire to get out and get some exercise. And then the, the library is hosting its Dewey Decimal Dash 5K on November 2nd. So registration's open, it's also a great fundraiser for the library that's undergoing its renovation right now and making great progress. So I don't know where exactly the course will be since the library is under construction, but it's usually over by the library and the high school. So, I hope everyone's school year is starting off well, and I will look forward to seeing everyone in October, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Caveter. Commissioner Quinn?
Okay, so I have a few things to say, sorry about that. So I've been receiving a few emails over the past, well, couple of years I would say, about streets that were repaved only half, like half, well, halfway. And I know that we would all love to do, do more, and there is constraints with the amount of money that we can spend and stuff, but I want them all to know that we will work, work hard to try to solve some of the issues, but I just want them to know that they're heard and I'm, and I, and I will continue to work with all them as the, the months and years go on. And also, I wanted to bring up a thing that I've been getting calls about, or a commer, or a commer, or a commercial trucks that on their, their, their streets, it says that they can't park, park there, so they go three, three more, the more streets and they park in front, front, front of homes where they have a tough time seeing when they get out, they, out, they got out of the driveway and stuff. So, I would like to see if we could revisit that and look and see how we can help to solve some, 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 like some, like some of the issues there. Because every time we put a sign on the street, they're just going to continue to go to other streets and, and that, and that will be hard to, and I think we can try to work on that now. And I also wanted to say tonight, it was great to honor the EMS and, and the police for all that they did. And this week, we, we will, we will have something, or September 11th, we'll look back at that and, and it's hard to believe that it's been that long since that. There's a lot of kids that don't even know that much about that day, but we need to thank our police and the EMS for what they do for us every day. And thank you to, to the fire and police and EMS in our community who go, 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 who go out there every day. So on September 11th, if you see, see, if you see any kids and stuff, just try to explain what that day was like for all of us that have lived through it and, and how horrific the, like the events were of that day. And then the trail the other day, as everybody talked about, thank you to everybody who, who worked so, like so hard on that trail. It, it's great, I've even begun to exercise more and walk along, along the trail, which is, I'm there every day, so you'll be seeing, seeing me. And all I hear from everybody is how great the trail, trail is, so it's great to hear that and to hear things that we've done that is good. So, and then lastly, Talonship Day is Octo, To, 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 October 5th. So, that is, I think everybody knows how much I love that day, so go, so go out and be proud that you're from this community.
You're here, thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Commissioner Hart?
Yes, just a couple of things, and follow up from the honoring the Grange, you can further support the Grange, they're having a cocktail party this coming Saturday, the fourteenth, from six to nine, you can get information on their website. Briefly, in regards to the Pennsy Trail, as everyone said, it was a great day. We voted tonight to expand the Darby Creek Trail. And I wanted to, along with everybody else that we've recognized, again, recognized the organization Haverford Trails, especially Rich Kerr and Peter Pugley and Icy. For the last ten years, they've been working with the Recreation Department, that we did not have these trails. It was because of the Recreation Department, because of these individuals, we pushed and continue to push. These were first step, we're trying to extend, we hope to extend the Darby Creek. The Pennsy Trail connects our community, but we're hoping to extend these trails to connect to other communities. There's opportunities, medium range to connect to our, to Upper Darby, through the Darby Creek Trail. Maybe long range to connect to Upper Darby on the Pennsy Trail. So it's pushing and trying to take one step at a time, and I, we're taking another step tonight, hope to see us continue to do that. That's all I have, have a good night.
Thank you, Commissioner Hart. Commissioner McCollum?
Just about everything I was going to mention has already been mentioned, but I'd like to personally point out, Brian, your staff, Eileen, Saturday was a great event, Connor and I took a walk, I guess you would say eastbound, and we couldn't get ten feet and people were stopping us, saying how great it was. Everybody loved it, so it's going to be a great addition to the Parks and Rec and great job, guys, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner McCollum. Commissioner Trombetta?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to start by saying sincerely, thank you to everyone who came tonight, sharing your thoughts on pickleball, specifically at Paddock Park. My park neighbors, I want to say I appreciate how hard this has been on you and on your daily lives, I understand that and I sympathize. I've regularly defended the position of, of making difficult changes to the pickleball courts. Been a challenging situation that I've had to manage and one I inherited, so not something I was expecting when I took on this position, but it's been my privilege to serve you and to try to find something that works for everyone. Do want to assure you, your concerns have been heard, and I'm regularly visiting Paddock Park just to kind of monitor how it's going. A lot of the discussion today talked about compromise, and as Mr. Kelly already highlighted for me by reading a number of the things that I wrote to them, there have been compromises, ones that were difficult again to make, that I received emails from the, some of the neighbors that we saw tonight, who were unhappy with the changes that we were making. And so just to briefly recap the measures that we have taken, because we take this seriously. Generally hired our engineers to conduct two sound studies to measure the noise levels. We installed sound mitigation curtains, which have helped to reduce the noise, though not to the extent I think that we'd like. Township maintains courts at Westgate Hills Park and the Grange to disperse some of the activity. Court hours have been modified to address concerns about early morning play, and signs have been posted to reinforce this. The township invested in timed locks for our courts to regulate usage more effectively. Courts are now closed every other Sunday to provide some relief to the residents, and again, we're closed during playground camp for the first week. Township has increased clinics and programs to better manage the court usage, and again, to kind of disperse where people are playing. Parks and Recreation staff continue to monitor and enforce proper usage of the courts to the best of their ability. Additional signage has been added to limit the use of tennis courts for pickleball, after hearing some feedback about that. Moving forward, and as we work together towards a resolution, I want to remind the parkgoers and the picklers to be mindful of our park rules and show courtesy to our neighbors, and I think they heard that tonight. Respecting the community surrounding Paddock Park is key to maintaining the balance that we're striving for. Finally, I just want to stress my commitment to maintaining a positive relationship with all of you, especially my neighbors. Value your input, everyone's input, and I hope we can continue to have a constructive dialogue to find a path forward that works for both the neighbors and our broader community, and that's all I have tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Trombetta. I have a couple of things, one, I, I was remiss, last Tuesday, I did not mention September 8th, 988 day mental health crisis. 988 is a number now nationally that is available, it's like 911, but rather than for emergencies, it is specifically for mental health crises. And yesterday is a day where it is highlighted due to the date, but it's something very important to be aware of. It's a resource for folks who are, find themselves, whether they're in an acute or chronic mental health crisis, it is another resource that's available. And so I, I, I just wanted to take advantage of the date and of the meeting to remind everybody of that. I also wanted to thank my, my colleagues and everybody in the township staff for the work involved in dedicating, in installing and dedicating the bridge on the trail, the Pennsy Trail. It was a lot of fun on Saturday, and what I said that day, I meant. The opportunity to be part of something that really bridges our communities, connects people from one side of the street to another, maybe from one perspective to another, one political stripe to another, is, is a privilege, and it's something that I have enjoyed immensely doing this job and something I will continue to enjoy as, as long as I get the opportunity to do it. And tonight is a good example of that, I want to commend everybody who came out tonight, the feelings on these issues are not, they're, 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 they're very strong. The things that people are dealing with, living in their homes around these parks, this is, this is very real, it is about the quality of their life. At the same time, for the folks who discovered this game and changed their own lives, it is a great, you know, inexpensive, very social activity for folks to enjoy. So it remains my goal for us to try to work out compromises and balance everybody's interest in this. But I want to commend everybody in the room tonight for respecting each other's opinions, for speaking out as they did and respectfully hearing what other folks had to say. We've had in the past some pretty heated meetings in this room, and different issues have come up. It's hard to imagine. It's hard to imagine a more incendiary issue than people enjoying their own home in peace, um, and others feeling like, um, parks and, 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 and resources are not available to them. And I thank everybody for how they handled that. So, um, school is back in session. Everybody be careful. Um, my mother was a school teacher, her grandmother was a school teacher. I've gotten into the habit now when I meet teachers to thank them for their service. And so for all these teachers starting up another season and for all these kids going back to school, um, good luck, um, good learning, and, um, and God bless you all. I will entertain a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
We are adjourned.